This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, again, is today is November 3rd, 2021, and we're going to begin our city council work session. Just before we get started, I would like to acknowledge all the hard work and time that Chief Richardson and Chief Criminal Deputy Horace have put into putting this presentation and program together with City of La Center. It's, they've been working on it now for several months. And again, I know that there's been a lot of people involved at the county. I'd like to thank Sheriff Atkins for his input, all the staff, people at the Clark County Sheriff's Department, Clark County Council, as well as the Clark County County Manager. So I say that the council very much appreciates all your hard work. With that being said, I would like to just turn it over to Chief Richardson and Chief Deputy Horace for their opening statements. And then again, this evening is just a continuation of the work session we had on October 27th. And it'll be primarily for Chief Richardson, Chief Horace, to answer any questions that the council may have. So with that, we can go ahead and get started, Chief Richardson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and community members. I just wanted to do a really quick recap from last week and move forward. It's, I gave you a lot of information in an hour last week, and it was fast. And so I hope you've had the opportunity to digest that and maybe come up with some more questions. But I just wanted to recall that we presented an option of contracting out to the Sheriff's Department for a startup cost of about $1.5 million. And that $1.5 million, that's the max. Since a lot of the employees would be coming in mid-year or the end of the year, that startup cost would go down, so we would have somewhat of a startup cost regardless. It's academy training, it's overtime for the academy, it's equipment, those kinds of things. So some of those costs we would incur anyway, that's the startup cost. The annual cost for the Sheriff's Department from year two to year five would be about roughly $1.4 million. And then on top of that, we have our own cost that we would have anyway. That's about ninety, a little over, about $96,000 roughly. So the whole entire contract would come out to about $1.5 million, which is still about $500,000 under what the Police Department budget would be if you fully staffed and fully funded the La Center Police Department. And remember that also I stated that this would assign deputies into the La Center Police Building. They would work a, what they call a La Center beat, which would be about 289th North, go a little bit east of the city, and it'd be about 45 square miles roughly. We'd have 24 hours, seven day a week coverage with three shifts, which is more than we have now, be guaranteed. If anybody called in sick, there's a training day, somebody takes family leave, vacation, comp time, whatever, those slots would be automatically filled. You would have a sheriff sergeant assigned full-time to the City of La Center, whose responsibility would be the same responsibilities as if you had a police chief. It would be the liaison between the Sheriff's Department and our community and the council and the mayor's office. And that person would also handle any complaints and do directed patrols and go to council meetings and community meetings, those kinds of things. In addition to that, the Sheriff's Department picks up all the liability for doing enforcement services within the City of La Center. Other than municipal code enforcement, there's a chance if they were doing some kind of enforcement on a municipal code, ended up on some kind of litigation, let's say it was found that it was an illegal ordinance or something like that, the city would then have to defend that since it's city law that they're enforcing. In addition to that, the Sheriff's Department's got all the capacity, much more capacity to recruit, retain employees. And they bring a lot of depth to the bench. So if we're short people over a long period of time, let's say we have a deployment of somebody in the military for a year like we do now, they have much more capability to actually staff that position than we would. And finally, it comes with all the other administrative overhead that you have with a Police Department. You've got a training unit, professional standards, evidence, records, fleet management, and all those kinds of things. And so what I'd like to do is move into the next slide, it's after this one that I added today. It's there. So. We're, are you there?
Clerk, could you add?
Just controlling the slides.
Okay.
One moment, this one doesn't seem to have it.
Well, I'll just keep talking until the slide pops up there. So the question is, why go to CCSO? And I can tell you, the City of La Center continues to have a long-term structural deficit year after year. And this deficit is not going away anytime soon. In fact, our next budget, I believe, has got a deficit of about $500,000 to $600,000 roughly in that area. And obviously, the mayor or somebody can correct me if that's incorrect, but there is a deficit there. And we're going to continue to do deficit spending, and so this would help alleviate that. The La Center Police Department will continue to be underfunded, under-equipped, under-trained, and understaffed. These small police departments like this are going the way of the bugging whip and the eight-track tape player. You can't, you don't, you'll never have sufficient staffing, you won't be able to compete with the big departments. The recruitment pool that we recruit from is actually smaller than the baby boomer generation. So there's actually less people interested in being police officers. So you're going to constantly have vacancies, you're going to constantly train. And when you get good employees, you train them up, they're going to go to other agencies because they're going to have better opportunities. Either make more money, have promotions, have a detective unit, traffic unit, whatever they want to work as more specifically positions. And that's never going to go away. The future policing is not going to get any less expensive, nor is recruitment going to get any easier. That's just the way of the world now. And so we're always going to be behind that, the eight ball, trying to catch up. And you're never going to have, you're going to have a lot of risk, a lot of liability, and it's really just going to get worse for a city this size. And finally, contracting out with CCSO will provide stable, efficient law enforcement services at a reduced cost while increasing coverage and reducing civil liability. And contracting with CSO gives the La Center community stable law enforcement coverage while explores new revenue sources, gauges the impact of additional police reform legislation, and evaluates the national economic picture. None of us know what it's going to look like next year. And we keep getting thrown one surprise after another. So remember, this is a five-year contract, we have two, five-year renewals, but you can give notice in year four if you want to cancel the contract when it comes to year five. And you could always start up your Police Department again. What this does, contracting out to the Sheriff's Department, is gives us some breathing room to actually do some evaluation and some strategic planning and look at what's over the horizon, what are the strengths and weaknesses of the city and the organization, and what are the threats, long-term threats, like we've talked about before. And that's going to be obviously money, staffing, and liability. And so with that, I'd just like to open it up to questions for myself or John Horace, and try to answer anything you have or clarify anything you've heard.
Chief Richardson, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, the idea that the Clark County Sheriff's Office would assume liability on behalf of the city for anything other than municipal code and ordinance violations is really interesting to me. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that would look like and what, I can see a lot of benefits for a city of our size with the budget that we have for having this in place on the liability side. And I'm just wondering if you could give me a little bit more information about what it would look like and if it would indeed benefit the city or the who the city.
I can tell you.
To make sense.
Yeah, it does. Thanks for the question. Police work is a high-risk, high-liability endeavor. In fact, everything we do, every policy procedure, every train, every kind of training scenario we do, everything that we do is to mitigate risk. And, you know, and we're talking about risk, not just the, you know, the unfortunate, you have, we have to shoot somebody and we get some kind of wrongful death lawsuit. But we, Police Departments get claims all the time. We get complaints because people say, hey, we damaged their property, we used excessive force. Motor vehicle accidents are a big risk with Police Departments. We have cars out there driving around 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the officers are looking at their computers and they're backing up and they're moving around and they run into things. Sometimes they run into people's property. And all of these things that happen, claims get filed, and attorneys get involved, and the insurance carriers get involved, and it's always costing money. Now, we're insured through a risk pool. AWC is a risk pool. And there was a bill that they tried to get through last year that's come, already, we already know it's coming back this year, and that was HB 1202, which is actually going to increase financial liability to cities and also eliminate, clear, eliminate qualified immunity, but they're also going to make it easier to file claims against cities. And AWC has already put out a bulletin to their members saying, hey, if this legislation passes, costs are going to go up because more, you're going to get more claims. And again, claims have to be, it doesn't have to be the truth, it doesn't have to be the facts. Even a bad claim is something that costs the city money because, and ultimately the insurance pool, because we have to do an administrative investigation depending on what it is, and attorneys get paid and everything like that. So that's just something to keep in mind. So obviously, the financial burden puts it on the county. They have a much, they have a much more robust system to absorb those kinds of claims. And I'm sure that Bronson, our city attorney, or John could talk more about that. That's how, that's just the nutshell.
So this would reduce, sorry, go ahead.
Let me just, a short comment. I reviewed a draft of the interlocal and a distinction of where liability lies with the Sheriff's Office as opposed to where liability would lie with the City of La Center is the following. I would say if a claim was related to the operation and execution of the law enforcement services, for example, if somebody claimed that officers engaged in excessive force in the making of an arrest, that's a claim that the Sheriff's Office would have to defend and be responsible for. But if a claim was that a city municipal ordinance was unconstitutional and somebody was arrested for violating that ordinance, that's a claim that the City of La Center would have to be responsible for defending. So a real-world example of that would be homelessness and anti-camping ordinances. And in Boise, they had an anti-camping ordinance that was found to be unconstitutional by the Ninth Circuit. So if the City of La Center had such an ordinance and the Sheriff's Office was in force in it and there was a claim, if the claim went to whether or not the ordinance is constitutional, that's on the city side to defend. If the claim was related to how the arrest was undertaken and whether or not there was excessive force involved, that's the kind of claim that the Sheriff's Office would be responsible for.
Councilor, do you have another question behind that one?
Oh, I have a whole bunch, but I'll give space for other people to ask them.
Thank you.
For now.
Chief Horace, can I ask a question regarding the contract that would be in place having the Sheriff, the our local policing here in La Center? Will there be a different, a new contract written up? Or will we fall under an existing contract that's already in place?
I can, I can talk to that, and so can Bob, and you guys just call me John. That's, that's fine, we don't have to do all the formalities, I'm good with John. So we are working on a rough draft, Bob and I have been going back and forth. And I think Bronson has touched on it, and our attorney has looked at it as well. So it would be a contract, we talked last week about, you know, a five-year contract, and then with the clauses in there of when, who could, who could cancel it and whatnot. But there'd be certain addendums as well as far as implementation and other factors. But the actual contract is being in rough draft form right now. Is that, Bob, is that?
Yes, yes. I don't know what other contract you're talking about. If it's the mutual aid agreement, that's a separate agreement. And if you're talking about special events, a contract that we sign for them, their deputies to come in and work special events, when I say special event, I mean coming in and working overtime shift for us, that's a separate contract also. So this, this agreement that we're going to move forward is separate in itself.
So, so there would not be a contract negotiation process involved here?
We're, we're in that process right now. What will happen is they have the attorneys and John and I working on negotiating an agreement. And what we would do is we would then come back to the council with that agreement because you have to authorize its approval. So you would actually see it at that point. But we're actually the ones, it's almost like a labor negotiation where we're going back and forth, and we're actually doing the legwork for you, but ultimately, the whole package has got to come back to you as a council.
Let me ask you another question regarding that. We've had obviously several discussions regarding the police process, several meetings, work sessions over the last several months. I guess my question is, here we are on the 3rd of November. What do you, Bob, or you, John, need from the council in a way of thumbs up, approval, so that we can give you the go-ahead to make it happen? What, what do you, what do you need from us going forward here?
I can, I'll answer that too. We've, we have to have an agreed upon, an initially agreed upon agreement between the attorneys and John and I, the sheriff and the county, something that we know that the county's going to approve. So we're going to have that, we're going to have a staff report, and we're going to have a resolution. The resolution authorizes the mayor to sign the contract. And we're going to bring all that back to you at the next council meeting. And then that's when you'll make the decision based on everything that's in front of you, which direction you want us to go. Either approve a contract with the Sheriff's Department or we'll have to go to Plan B, which is ramping up the Police Department somehow.
Okay, so you're saying that at our next council meeting, which will be on the 17th, I believe, then we'll have an opportunity to vote as a council to give you the go-ahead and to start the wheels turning.
That is correct. We, we've always been moving through the year, remember? We, we've had these discussions. I told you in the springtime, it's going to be slow because it's just a big process with a lot of moving parts. And we're getting to the point now where we're getting things finalized because we, you know, we got in front of the county council and we got their, the sheriff got their direction because they're ultimately the ones that have to approve the contract that they're in. And so we're just methodically moving forward, and this is where we're, this is where we've landed.
Thank you.
I'll just add, one of the outcomes of this work session is, you know, the city council decides what they want on their agenda. And so we're looking for directions that, in fact, you want this agreement brought before you on the November 17 agenda.
Yeah, thank you for that, Bronson. That's, that's what we're hoping to achieve here this evening, counsel. Thanks, Bronson.
I would like to make a comment if I could.
Absolutely.
So just to kind of let you know, and again, Bob's right, we've been going back and forth. And ultimately, we, a package is presented to you. And then you guys have more questions go back and forth. But just kind of let you know on a timeline, the county council, their last meeting of the year is December 7th. Okay, so they need, if this deal were to go through, they would need something in their hands by December 1st. I know we're kind of getting down to crunch time, but we've, I would say we're getting quite a bit of the stuff done and just needs presented to you, you guys decide, make a decision. If it's a go-ahead, then we'll get it to our council. But after December 7th, they don't meet until January. So that's just something to keep in mind as far as timelines go.
Thank you, John. I've got another question I've had for John, if I could. Is there, as far as rating or training regarding our existing police officer in La Center versus the Sheriff's Department? Are there any different or additional training requirements for the sheriff than there would be here for La Center police officers?
No, other than the local ordinances, we would have to get up on those. They, I don't know which ones you guys have, but that would be it. They have to go to the same police academy, the same required training. We can, any Police Department can offer additional training and optional training, but all the standard state requirements are all the same.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding the timelines. Chief Richardson, can you refresh my memory? What, if we were to reject this proposal and go forward down the path of trying to rebuild our local police department, could you give us a sense of what that timeframe could, could be?
Sure, I actually wrote something in case somebody asked me that question. So let's say January 1st rolls around and so January 1st rolls around and we've got a budget approved, so we know, okay, this is how much money we have. The first thing you're going to have to do is you're going to hire, have to hire a police chief. And so we've done some research in that, we put some money in there for a police chief recruitment. Police chief recruitment is going to take at least, at least 90 days. It depends where your candidates are going to come from. I can tell you, I talked to Mike Painter, who's the WASPAC, Washington Association of Chiefs, Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. He's their executive recruiter. He says the pool for qualified police chiefs in the state of Washington right now is pretty dim. Just like officers don't want to come and work in the new environment in the state of Washington, police chiefs for the most part don't want to either. And so that does impact recruitment. I think we're lucky in the, in the sense that we're near Oregon. So I think, I know a couple of captains at Portland PD that would apply for the job. That doesn't mean that they're the most qualified, but at least we have some people that actually already lived in the area that have command experience, executive experience, and we could draw on that, that pool. So that's going to, that's something to look forward to. But at least 90 days, because, you know, you're going to have to have this person move, you're going to have to pay their moving expenses, you've got to do a background. And for a police chief, you want a really good extensive background. Because you really got to get in the weeds, because once you hire the police chief, he's going to come in under some kind of contract. And generally speaking, there, it's very difficult, you can't just fire them. So that's something you've got to look at. You've got to wait till your officer, we have an officer that's on military duty, he needs to come back. Remember, we need what's called field training officers. After employees go to the academy, they come back, they've got to go through a field training officers program. Generally, you have three or four FTOs, and these people rotate from one FTO to the other. We only have one FTO right now, and that's our sergeant, and we have no other FTOs because we don't have any other employees, basically. So we need to get this employee, if he wants to, we can't force him, through an FTO training. So at least we can stand up two field training officers. And then we're going to have to modify our field training program in order to make this thing work. And so that's going to take somewhere between 90 and 180 days. And at the same time, remember that we're always recruiting, regardless of what you read in social media. We use a company called Public Safety Testing. We're always out there, there are always anybody that checks the box for La Center. We get their test scores for their written and their physical agility, so that's always there. The problem we're going to have is if it's a entry-level employee that we finally get through the background and everything else, there's no academies again until April of next year. They won't graduate until August of next year, and they won't finish the FTO program until roughly December of 2022. So that's something to remember, we can only hire two people at a time because we've got to get them through FTO training and a couple of other things. So it's going to take years to ramp up the full staffing. And then you have, we can look at laterals, the lateral pool is also very thin. Laterals aren't coming to Washington State very much anymore. Most of the laterals on the West Coast are going to Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming for obviously obvious reasons. So that's something you also have to look at. So at the end of the day, you're also going to have to do a sergeant's promotion at some point in time because you're going to, you have two sergeants that you're budgeted. So you're, you're almost into 2023 by the time the dust settles. And so to make a long story short, I anticipate you won't get the full staffing if you ever get there. And if you do, it's going to be two or three years down the line. Just because by the time you get people, and remember, these are people that we've gone through the entire process, including probation, and they haven't been terminated for unsatisfactory performance or people that we've got on probation haven't left to go to another Police Department. So it's a long haul to get to where we need to go.
So that leads me to another question. Can we talk a little bit more, can we learn a little bit more about the timeline in front of us with the, the other options contracted with CCSO?
I'll defer to John on that one.
Okay, last, and I want to make sure my information matches last week is, here's some rough, well, I think this one's kind of sad, is we can, we could provide a sergeant, and that's what you're talking about, the getting into the operational sergeant by July. We can, we can provide, and everybody knows it's pay-as-you-go. So I just want everybody to know that, is you don't pay, and we were talking about doing quarterly, you don't pay until you get those deputies actually out there. We can provide, and I have to be a little bit cautious on this because we're in tough times right now. So I want to be careful. We can provide two to four more officers next year. I don't know, I can't promise the full staffing by the end of next year. So I mean, I just don't want to say something I can't because we are in very, very tough times, like Bob has said. I mean, I actually, I think Bob's timeline is actually pretty generous, and I'm not tagging with him because I don't have any dog in that fight. But that's, it's tough to get people right now. We're doing it, and we're trying to hang on to people. So I know we can get a sergeant, and we can get two to four bodies next year, and the other two bodies to fill. If you're looking for a hard date, I couldn't tell you. But obviously, we would want, be trying to fulfill that, fulfill that as soon as we could. So I just want to leave it a little bit open and have those discussions. If it came down to it where you actually wanted actual dates and timelines, you know, obviously from my end, I'll just be honest, I'm going to spread it out as far as I can for the unknown. And I know your end is you're like, oh, we want these people, we want our, our police. I get, I get both sides, but I'm just, I'm defending my side right now. So some bodies, yes, next year, a sergeant by July who will act as the chief, that's for sure. And a couple more bodies, two to four, next year.
I'm not asking you to go on record or put you on the spot. I just, I am just curious because they are two very diverse timelines.
Yes.
We can just leave it at that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, regarding the, as we go through this buildup, obviously, we know now that you have, over the last several months here, been working very hard to fill in the vacancies and the various shifts throughout the day. And with pretty much, for a very, you know, pretty well being successful there, but not able to fill all of those spots. We know that. But as we move through this, you anticipate that that activity would continue on as you are doing now? And you think that, that Washougal and State Patrol, Ridgefield, Battleground will continue to support us in that regard with encouraging or helping, asking their officers to help us out during this buildup time?
I can tell you that currently we have agreements with CCSO, Washougal, and Ridgefield. Those are the ones that have been helping us out. And John and I would have to have a conversation about how we continue to fill the holes that we can fill because having somebody is better than nobody, you know, to handle calls. With that being said, I also am aware of the fact that our neighbors are looking for some kind of direction in the City, City of La Center from the council because they don't want a long-term commitment of providing mutual aid forever because they have their own needs and wishes. So it's a balancing act. But I think that as long as we But I think that as long as we have the goal line that we're headed towards, I think our neighbors will be happy with that. Because they're understanding that everybody is in the same boat here, everybody has recruitment issues. So yes, we, we would have to figure out between John and I, how we plug as many holes as we can. While he's ramping up, and so that's something we would have to look at.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question for John regarding the positions up here with your staffing. Have you got, have you talked to anybody in your department, or has anybody expressed interest in, in coming to the center?
Yes, there actually has been some discussions at the precinct level. You know, you wanna be careful, we talked about what our plan was of putting a sergeant up there, asking the chief, it would be a great opportunity for somebody looking for. You know, promotional opportunities, being the, the designated chief of, even, you know, it's a smaller city, but it does have a lot of more responsibility. Than just a regular sergeant does, so we would make it a specialized position. And then we do have some officers that I think that live up in that area that would probably like to, to work up in the area, but. The option, as I said last week, it would be by seniority they could bid on those spots.
Yeah, I talked to one of your, one of your deputies that lives within the city limits, he said. He probably wouldn't bid on it, cause it'd be awkward, living and working in the same town, he said, you run into somebody, maybe you've arrested, that wouldn't be good. Thank you.
Everybody's different, so, yeah.
Chief, again, one of the things that. I know we're doing at some level, and that is the house patrols or house calls. During individuals going on vacations and so on, and I know that you're. Continuing to try to support that to some level. Do you anticipate that continuing, or will that be completely shut off? Once we start this process with the sheriff's department?
You know, I've actually, actually looked at that a little bit, we've, we've only had about. I would say less than a half a dozen this year. The people have actually come in and requested that, and we do it with our staffing that we have now. That is not something that CCSO does, it doesn't mean that it's something that, some day maybe they would, but you know, like everybody else. With staffing shortages and those kinds of things, we may decide, and some cities do this, and it's just something you have to look at. Is, you know, some cities use volunteers, you know, like now volunteers or VIPs. To go check people's houses when they're on vacation, we might have to have some kind of alternative. Other than a uniformed police officer, it's a very expensive asset out there checking doors on people's homes and stuff. And you, I can tell you that I did look at this statistics over the last three or four years of occasion, house checks. And we did, I think between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, I think we did two thousand, over two thousand of them. But they only averaged about three and a half minutes each, so they, nobody's, nobody's actually getting out of their car and walking around and checking homes. They're doing drive-bys for the most part. So we have to, we have to look at that, and then the other issue is the risk management side of it. Are we, are we making a promise to somebody that we're actually gonna check their house? And if we don't, is there any risk to the city with that, you know, I don't, I don't believe so, but you never know. Doesn't mean that somebody couldn't file a claim, so the answer to that is, I don't see it in this initial contract. But that doesn't mean that we can't find an alternative or something else.
John, is that something that goes on at all within the Clark County?
No, it does not.
It's not, okay, thank you.
I think we're at the juncture here that. To keep things moving on an effective and efficient. Schedule and, and get the safety and security of the community addressed. We need to get this on the next council agenda and move forward. So we, we already know that we're up against some significant delays. Getting everything in place so that we're, have the complete coverage that we want to have for the community. And, you know, I, I would encourage us to move forward and get this on the very next agenda that we can.
I would agree with that, Liz, and I guess I'll defer to the mayor here. Mayor, is that something that we would do, have a motion in that regard this evening here during our workshop? How is that?
No, Dennis, we're not in the motion, I think we just, if we could just get the council's, you know, concurrence. That, you know, that's what the desire of the council is, is to get that advanced. To the agenda for the next city council meeting, which I believe will be on the seventeenth of this month. And yeah, we're just looking for some consensus and direction here.
Call on that, Mayor, that just, for each of us to indicate whether or not we wanna move forward or not?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can do that, that would be a good approach, I don't know, Councilman Rukiel, is this something you'd like to see put on the November seventeenth agenda?
I think it absolutely needs to be on the agenda.
Thank you.
We know what our historical obstacles have been with the, the existing police department, keeping it staffed. And, you know, since the police levels didn't come to pass. Until we had card rooms come to the center. And that's basically what helped us fund the police department, and now those funds are. You know, no longer as flush as they were. We've also historically seen the revolving door of officers after we've trained them. And understandably so, rotate out and go to other departments, as you've said, chief. And chief deputy, you know, they're, they're looking for opportunities for advancement. And we are a community that, that doesn't have that, that many opportunities. Even Sergeant Olson rotated out. And, you know, after you invest that much money, time and time again. With the lengthy training, the equipment and everything else that goes along. It, it becomes a little problematic over time to keep. You know, the community's staffing where it needs to be, and, and that is what's played into our situation today. So I think, you know, everything points to moving forward and, and getting the coverage for the community that they deserve. And, and that they're looking for.
I would certainly second that, Liz.
Yeah, I think it's important that we get, we get uniforms on the street. I mean, ideally, it would be our officers, but with the timeframe that Chief Richardson's painted, I don't think that's satisfactory. I think that we have a lot better opportunity with the county, Clark County Sheriff's Office fulfilling our. Police needs here, and I think in, in the long run, that's, that would be the best solution for, for our town.
I also think that not only the fact that we can move quicker, but the, the liability. That we would be lifted off of our shoulders as a small city. And that the sheriff's department is willing to take that on, I think that is, that's a big, that's a big plus. That for the city, and the fact that we don't have to each day have someone. In the city, on our city staff, trying to fill open positions, day after day after day. But being able to have that handled by a professional organization like CCSO. And they know, they know what they're doing, they have the staff, and they have the, they know what we need. And I think that we're locked up with them, so again, I would, Mayor, I'd like to see this on the agenda for the seventeenth, our next meeting.
Okay, thank you for that, counsel, appreciate your comments. Are there any other questions or discussion that the council would like to have during this work session regarding the agreement with CCSO?
I do have another question, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hill.
Justin, please, go.
Okay, so. I can see a lot of pros. We are gonna be running a six hundred thousand-ish dollar deficit next year, continuing to eat into the reserves. We will be reducing the city's liability, which in my opinion is huge. In the time that we're in with the high degree of visibility on law enforcement actions in our culture at large. The timeline. Indicates to me that we will have. A better chance of having safer streets sooner rather than later, which as a father and a family member in the, a family man in this town. I benefit a lot. I am curious, though, Chief Richardson, and not, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot. What, what, what would the drawbacks be? I, I've not heard a whole lot about what the. Associated drawbacks of this contract with the sheriff's office, in your, in your opinion, your professional opinion?
I always love to give my opinion, first thing is you gotta work with John Horace, that could be a good thing or a bad thing, but besides that. Yeah, remember, the sheriff's department has gotta learn, they haven't had a contract city since a long time ago. And so they have to learn, they're, just like we do, and our officers do when we hire them. Their deputies are gonna have to learn how to police a small, small town. And, and listen to small town problems and handle small town problems. And so that's a learning curve that you're gonna have with anybody, but you know, the sheriff's department is, it's something they're gonna have to learn. Which I'm sure they will. John is, you know, assured me that, you know, that, you know, we're all working in this together, it's a learning. It's a marriage, and we're working, trying to figure out how to live with one another, a new marriage, so that's, that's one thing. You know, obviously, a large sheriff's department, the sheriff is elected. So that could be a good thing or a bad thing, depending on, you know, the council and the mayor, when they want things done. Because at the end of the day, the sheriff is, is standalone elected official. Not unlike a police chief who, who works for the mayor. And so that's another relationship that we have to develop between, between everybody, the council and the mayor. And I think the other thing for a large sheriff's department, you know, like almost large agencies, they don't do vacation house checks. I know that's a big deal, but they don't do those, but I think that, you know, over time, we'll see. Well, what happens, but I think John can also, you know, answer some of this. I think there's way more positives than negatives nowadays. We essentially operate, especially in the state of Washington, the same. We have the same training mandates, we all go to the same academy, we all have to have the twenty-four hours of annual training. We all have to have all the additional training that gets mandated, all of our policies and procedures, for the most part, the big ones, like pursuits and use of force. Are essentially the same, there isn't a lot of, uh, big differences between how we operate as far as oversight. So John, you wanna step in and say anything?
I, I agree with Bob for the most part, that's a, that's a good question, right? And, and I think it's fair for us to give honest answers, if, you know, looking at it from all sides is, there will be a bit of a learning curve. I think the sergeant getting up there earlier before the deputies are deployed helps set the tone and gets to meet the council. And, and then can, cause you'll have one sergeant for those six or, you know, deputies. And, and they'll, they'll do that, where you could come in, and like with anything, when one of those deputies is sick or. On training and you have a substitute, so to speak, and again, learning a little bit of the small town politics, you know, good or bad. It, it's a little bit different than what they're used to, so there could be, there will be, lack of better words, there will be complaints, okay? Hey, I thought this was gonna happen, no, this was, that's what the sergeant's there for, as the acting chief of police and going, okay, hey. This is how we're gonna do it, and I, I think they're very workable problems, but it'll be a little bit of adjustment, probably for the. For a city of the center is used to having their own, own designated police force. It's now kind of a shared one with the county, the other little negative, so to speak, is. That deputy is working an entire beat area too, so they're not just restricted to the center. And I think you guys know that, you saw the map, I believe that most of their free time will kind of be centered around the center. Cause that's what they're gonna do, their, the precinct would be there for them to do reports, use the restroom. People usually tend, tend to hang around where other people are at, you know what I mean? And so, but there could be, they could be three, four, or five miles away on another call when their call's the center. If it's an emergency call, we send people anyways right now, like we do in emergency agreements. So that is just one of the, you don't have somebody within that city limits all the time. Now, the center officers would cover us as well, they would leave the city limits, and they would help Ridgefield as well, so that's not like. You just had an officer twenty-four hours right within your city limits all the time, but you would have had them more if you had your own police department, that is a true fact. So.
Thank you for those candid answers.
Another question, we have been very fortunate over the last number of months here to have a monthly update. Of incidents within the city, and I think that's been very beneficial for not only the council, the mayor, but also the citizens who. Log on and listen to our council meetings to find out what kind of activity, police activities going on. John, do you see that going, continuing, and would perhaps the, once a month, would the sergeant? Make a presentation to city council regarding police activity within our city limits?
Yeah, I, I think I look at that sergeant as, that's your guys' police chief, and that's your guys' contact. And they are assigned to that, they're, they're there all the time, and you know, and so you're getting that same person, at least for a year, or maybe we'll make it a two-year assignment. So you get some consistency, so absolutely, that's a normal, that's a normal thing, and that, I, I would follow that. We can write up, and Bob can, and I can talk a little bit about what we may want the, when we do a write-up for the sergeant position there of. Hey, you will attend these things, you will give monthly briefings, just to at least give, cause I may not think of all the things that you guys have going on in your town. So I don't have, I don't think Bob has a problem giving some input there, he usually tells me what he thinks. By the way, Bob did most of the work on this, I'll have to say that, if somebody said, thanks for, hey, I did about twenty percent, he did about eighty percent of this work. And so I just wanna, you know, he, he's done the, the hard stuff here, I just kinda sit back and criticize his, his work, but. We have a good working relationship, I do think it's a good thing, and I think that sergeant out there, once you get to know them. They're gonna be stationed out there, so it's gonna be your, your chief of police.
John, I think the fact that you're here this evening, and have been here that last week as well, tells me that you're all in on this. Making this happen, and I appreciate that, the fact that you both work together well is a plus, that's another plus plus. And, cause it, this is not a one-man show for sure, and I do appreciate all the effort that you're putting in on it. And I can tell you're committed to helping us to, helping the center come up with the best plan.
A question for either Bob or, or John. Did you, what if you say that we would have a clerk, a clerical person also assigned to the center for backup things like fingerprinting?
Under the current agreement, there is not somebody assigned to the police department. They are taking over our records and our property and evidence, which they've, they've had property and evidence, and they've had after hour records. So now they're gonna do full-time records, so that's all included in the contract, but those people are not stationed at the, the PD. What we did discuss is maybe, you know, depending on how the money is, and what, and we can work something out later on. Again, it maybe it's a volunteers, or maybe it's a, you know, part-time or full-time employee, and we're not there yet. But getting somebody assigned out to the, the center police department, that could do fingerprinting and CPLs. And public records requests and those kinds of things, and then offer that service to everybody in North County. Because that would be a win-win for everybody, the north end, cause you know, right now, I think if you need a CPL, you've gotta go downtown Vancouver. Well, if there's things we could do out at the PD and make it more convenient for all the residents in that area. I think that's where we would tend to go, again, that position isn't budgeted in, in this, this staffing model we have now. But it's not, it doesn't mean with someone we can't add later on.
And would, would the contract need to be amended to cover that?
You know, it, it's a, we have to look at it, it might have to be, but that's something that's pretty, I think we could work out. Or, you know, you can always make it a part-time city employee and just put them over there. We, we'll work, we can work something out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So counsel, just once again, and your discussion just among yourselves before we conclude this evening's work session or again, questions. I, I do think that, you know, we're really entering into something here that's, would be brand new to both the city as well as the county. There'd definitely be a, a period of time with kind of a steep learning curve, but, you know, I'm confident that any and all issues could be resolved over time. And I think that working with CCSO really does provide the city with a great many more options. And the other thing that I think is that it would give us a great deal more certainty with what our, you know, moving forward with providing law enforcement services to the city of a center. And I think that's a critical point that we need to make as well. Standing up our own police department is just loaded with a lot of uncertainty. And especially in today's environment, not just here at the state level, but the national level. And I think that's a critical point that needs to be made as well. So again, I appreciate Chief Richardson and Chief Horsh's time, their work and efforts. It's right now 6:22. If there are no other questions or comments, city staff has been directed by the council to advance this to the November 17th city council meeting. And at that time, it'll be presented to the council and we'll take it from there. And I appreciate the council's time and the great questions that you've asked this evening. Obviously, you came prepared and I really do appreciate that. If there are no other questions, we can go ahead and adjourn this work session. It's now 6:22 and then we'll just all convene again here at 6:30 to start the city council meeting.
You want us to sign off or just stay on here?
Well, I, I don't recommend you sign off. I would just mute your mic and turn off your camera. It's only going to be a few minutes. Give us a little chance to take a break if needed.
All right, good evening, guys.
This conference will now be recorded.
Today is November 3rd, 2021. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, do I have the roll call?
Councilmember Bob. Oh, I'm sorry, this is not updated. Councilmember Keeler.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Strobin.
He may be joining us a little bit later.
Councilmember Serbini.
Present.
And Mayor Thornton.
Present, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, there are three public comments. It's again, October 29th, 2021. The Center Museum is excited to announce that we have partnered with the Call Foundation and proudly present the Margaret Call Heppola slash listener historical museum scholarship program. 2022 senior awards will be in the amounts of 2,500, 1,500 and 1,000 available to any two-year for two to four-year college or trade school. These scholarships will not only support the listener historical museum, but will also help in promoting our town history. Applications must include a 500-word essay regarding an item, person, or place seen when visiting the museum and describe its connection to our community. The deadline for receiving your essays is April 13th, 2022. See our website for more details and helpful links at http://www.thelcentermuseum.org. Sincerely, Suzy Terrell, Secretary. Council comments, November 3rd, 2021. Jack Davis, 1524 West Alder Place, La Center. I was fortunate to watch the city council work session on October 27th. The presentation by Chief Richardson was impressive. I'm encouraged that the listener, that the listener will soon have better law enforcement than we have had in the past with more coverage than we previously enjoyed. Working with the Clark County Sheriff's Department is certainly the right step and unquestionably is, is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the center. I would like to express my appreciation to Mayor Thornton and Chief Richardson for all the hard work they did in putting this together and the support they have had, they have from this council. Well done, all of you. The Center City Council comments, November 3rd, 2021. Subject, Clark County Sheriff's Office. Doug Boff, 1202 Sage Crest Drive, Orkut, California 93455. As a former Center City Council member of three and a half years, I'm glad to have served on city council during the early discussions with the Clark County Sheriff's Office. I've reviewed the city council work session and Chief Richardson's presentation of October 27th. And I want to say that it is obvious to me that a tremendous effort has been made by key individuals to craft a preliminary framework of a possible agreement with CCSO. As, as presented at the work session, the potential relationship with CCSO is poised to, one, provide thorough law enforcement coverage and training. Two, deal with recent costly state mandated requirements. And three, go a long way toward addressing the center's financial issues. I encourage the Center City Council to continue working with CCSO to draft a final agreement. In closing, I want to mention that when my wife Beverly and I moved from the center, we moved into an unincorporated area. Our new community is served by the local county sheriff's office and we are pleased with their visibility and coverage. Thank you for listening. And that is all.
Thank you, Clerk. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I do have a couple of notes that I would like to share with the council this evening and the committee. First, my next mayor's town hall will be tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:30 PM. It will be a virtual meeting again and you can join the meeting through our civic web on the, or excuse me, it's right on the city website. So I encourage everyone to attend that. All is welcome. Just a reminder that the city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. And counsel, remember that our next city council meeting will be on Wednesday, November 17th, beginning at 6:30 PM. And also just have everybody mark their calendar that this year's city Christmas celebration will be December 5th, beginning at 4:30 PM. So we will have a Christmas celebration like we've had in the past. We've got, of course, the city will be participating along with the, the community members will be participating. Our county fire rescue, I, well, the center church will be participating and some other organizations as well. So I think we're all looking forward to, to getting back, to having our tree lighting and Christmas celebration. And also just a reminder that the Santa House will open on Friday, December 3rd. And then finally, I just would want to recognize that Veterans Day is a time for all of us to pay our respect to those who have served in the past. I'd like to take this opportunity tonight to thank anyone that's on the council meeting that has served in the military forces in the past. And I want to thank you for your service. And on Veterans Day, we all proudly hang our flags and recognize all the service members that have served. And when you have an opportunity to thank them for their service, I would encourage you to do so. And I'd like to thank the Center American Legion in Vance for placing the flags on the bridge for Veterans Day. I think we all look forward to seeing those flags when they're put up by the American Legion. So that's all I have for the council this evening. Next on the agenda is the attorney's report. The attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. In past meetings, I have updated you on the status of the Riverside Estates subdivision and the receivership proceeding that that subdivision is subject to. This Friday, the Clark County Superior Court Judge Gonzalez is going to consider a motion to sell Phase Two of that subdivision. And I have filed a motion on behalf of the city to condition the sale of that phase of the subdivision upon the determination of the validity of a lien asserted against public infrastructure in the subdivision. And if the lien's valid, to condition the sale on the release of the lien. And just by way of a little background, the original developer of that subdivision, Peter Etrow, through a company called ECM Development, did the development work of the subdivision. There was a company called JLJ Earth Movers who did grading. JLJ wasn't paid in full. They had about a million dollar claim in the receivership. They asserted a lien against property subdivision, including streets and stormwater facilities and sanitary facilities, various tracks in the subdivision that serve public stormwater, sanitary sewer and transportation facilities. So on behalf of the city, I asked the court to condition the sale on, first, determine if those liens are even valid. And second, if they are valid, to condition the sale on obtaining the release of all liens. So that's scheduled for hearing this Friday. And I will update you as soon as I have a ruling from the Superior Court. So I think Riverside Estates subdivision has been a very challenging subdivision in a lot of respects. But we will take those challenges one step at a time and I will do my best to protect the interests of the city. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Bronson. Yeah, and thank you for your continued hard work on all the issues that have come up with that particular subdivision. It has been a challenge, so I appreciate everything that you're doing. Any questions for the city attorney this evening, counsel?
Rob, so this is Dennis. Any, any other change regarding any of the COVID restrictions? Anything worked on our behalf or in our favor for the city?
No, it's really been the governor's office in terms of the restrictions or orders on public meetings and public records has been status quo for the past two or three months. So nothing new on that front.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel, for the city attorney this evening? Okay, thanks again, Bronson.
You're welcome.
Next are council comments. First is councilmember Keeler.
I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Richardson and Sergeant Horsh for their candor earlier tonight at our work session. I found it very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to echo Councilmember Keeler's feelings. That was a great presentation and I could tell there's a lot of work put into that. I think it's important that we get police on the street as soon as possible for our citizens and try to get back to some sense of normal here. That's all I have, Mayor, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I'm going to read this. Good evening, Mayor, city council and citizens. As your councilman, I want to go on record thanking Mayor Thornton, councilmember Servini, William Strobin and Keeler, and also Chief Richardson and Jeff Swanson for their hard work and the many extra hours they have given to finally say we are getting close to having an agreement with the Clark County Sheriff to provide law enforcement services to the center. This has been a very heavy lift for the city and has been taken and has taken a team effort to make it this happen. I am proud to have been a part of it. I'm also proud to be a part of the leadership of this city and have been honored to be able to work with each of these individuals over the past 11 months. I look forward to having Clark County Sheriff being responsible for providing law, great law enforcement that we, the city deserve. And I've got a couple of other things here. First on the CTRAM, just a quick thing here. Scott Patterson is the chief capital project planning officer. And he was just appointed to a prestigious position with the American Public Transportation Association. And this is a feather in the cap for CTRAM. And I know that the CEO of CTRAM is very pleased with this. And so he'll be representing CTRAM throughout the United States in this committee responsibility. And then on the port of Ridgefield, just a quick note that they have a new accounting manager, Karen Stevenson, who is just on duty. But more than that, they've got a replacement for Brent Grinning, who has been the CEO since 1998 of Ridgefield Port. Randy Mueller is coming to Ridgefield from Chehalis Port. And prior to that, he was also with Ridgefield Port a number of years prior to that. So anyways, good things are happening and within the port of Ridgefield and we want to continue to keep a good, keep a good contact with them on what's happening. So, and again, I'll just echo what Councilman Williams and Keeler said regarding the meeting this afternoon or this morning, excuse me, mixed up here, this afternoon here regarding the police. And thanks to Chief Horsh and Chief Richardson for their fine work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. And yeah, thank you for your involvement with both CTRAM and, and the port of Ridgefield. The time that you spend doing that is much appreciated and you always bring valuable information back to the city. So I appreciate that very much, Dennis. Okay, Councilmember Servini.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything in addition to add that hasn't already been stated.
Thank you. So moving along, next on the agenda this evening are staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening. The first one will be presented by Jeff Swanson. It'll be the community development staff report. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council, mayor and citizens of the center. And clerk, could you put up the project map, please? I'll just offer up three brief project updates. So the first one is project number eight. And this is Heritage Country Estates. Three plans are in plan review currently and following the review and the permitting of those plans, all of the lots in that subdivision will have been permitted. So that project will be wrapped up and be fully built. Second update is project number nine, which is Highland Terrace. The city and the Department of Ecology have been in The city and the Department of Ecology have been in contact contractor that is working out there related to some erosion control compliance. So if you've noticed some erosion control issues in that area, the city staff and the Department of Ecology are working on that. They did submit for final plat approval on October 22nd for one of the phases of that project. And finally, the last update I have for you this evening is project number 13, which is Stevens Hillside. And we received a pre-application submittal on October 27th. This is a project which attained, it's an 86 lot subdivision which attained preliminary approval through the hearings examiner process back in 2018. And they have since revised some aspects of the project. And so we're coming in for a pre-application conference to review the proposed revisions and discuss the entitlement process going forward from there. So those are the three updates I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Justice Randy, got two questions. What's the status of Minute Management Project Four?
No changes on that one since last update. So the last word we had on that was they were kind of holding off and waiting to see what happened with the materials and labor market because the recent spike in inflation has has made them want to kind of sit back and wait a little bit before proceeding. But in terms of like the city, I think they have, I think they largely have what they need to proceed.
Okay, and then the other one would be, it's still on the roster, Schwartz B and B. Is that ever going to turn into a real bed and breakfast? Looks like there's people just living there.
I believe that they, you know, in terms of the city, you know, they received building permits and went through the entitlement process and have constructed the B and B that they proposed. I can't speak to, you know, how they're operating it or what exactly they're doing there.
Okay. Do you know anything about the trailer that's next to it? They've got a big dumpster. It looks like they're taking the trailer apart. Is there any activity on that?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know that they've submitted for any kind of permit on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff this evening, counsel? Okay, thanks, Jeff. Appreciate the updates. Our next staff report will be presented by our Public Works Director, Matt Jenkins. Matt?
Hello, Mayor, council, citizens. How are you? I have the November staff report for Public Works. We'll start off with operations in streets and facilities. Public Works continues to work through keeping city properties maintained and drainage systems and stormwater systems clear throughout the city. Falls in full swing, and the crews continuing to spend a lot of time leaf blowing and cleaning up leaves and foliage throughout town. Good portion of their time also cleaning gutters. As always, the Public Works crew is continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city, along with any other road hazards. And again, a lot of their time is going to be spent. You'll see the streets we brought, clearing gutters and catch basins, things like that. On park and grounds, the battleground board crews have had a small number, a small number of participants. They have been assisting with weed eating and debris cleanup as of late. Morning has begun to slow down, and staff are using the extra time to clean up leaves and work on fall pruning throughout the parks and trail systems and city properties. On the personnel side, currently all staff are healthy, working normal shifts, and appropriate safety proportions are being followed for the pandemic. On the wastewater operations front, under operations, all plant parameters remain well within compliance of the MPDS permit limits. Bio-solids inventory remains low. City is still currently receiving six loads per month from Aline. The NBRs continue to run well in the warm weather. Staff put this together. That should be cooler weather with permeability remaining strong. As the temperatures continue to cool, they'll, staff will continue to make adjustments and optimize plant parameters to run accordingly. Staff has cleared both NBRs ahead of the wet season and clean, or cleaned both NBRs ahead of the wet season with both NBR showing strong recovery. On the maintenance front, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing. Staff is completing the final annual services on pumps, marshpools. Most marsh pump mixers and blowers have had their annual services and inspections. I think we're down to the final two this week. On the administrative front, the October DMR Discharge Monitoring Report is being compiled and prepared for submission to Ecology. Staff continues to complete continuing education requirements for the period ending in 2021. The annual F1 characterization test is currently being planned with BSK Labs. And staff is currently working regular shifts but maintaining social distancing and masking practices when applicable. On the project side, the SCADA project is moving forward with PAG. Tag has received the equipment, continues to build the programming. We are doing small site installation testing in late October, which actually just occurred. The actuator in Los Ana Road has been delayed until 2022 due to supply chain constraints and excessive lead times both on the controller and the actuator itself. So we'll revisit that hopefully in 2022. On the Building Department side, permitting and construction are still progressing, but we have noticed some seasonal slowing. Staff is conducting an average of 15 to 18 thousand day resulting in 25 to 40 inspections per day. Both residential line, commercial, single family residential plan review time is currently at three weeks. Staff has taken in 91 single family and five commercial building permit applications since the start of the year. The new middle school has achieved temporary occupancy. They just performed a ribbon, ribbon cutting. The building official continues to work with LCSD to achieve final occupancy as soon as possible. Teresa's Little School has been granted temporary occupancy. They actually just got an extension on that. And the building official continues to work with Gentile Investments to achieve final occupancy, and part of that equation is getting alarm system through Clark Calix Fire Rescue, which they're working on in conjunction with the city. On the stormwater front, the street sweeper has been very busy cleaning up leaves in the main thoroughfares and throughout town. Staff continued to work with Ecology on testing and source tracing stormwater streams in town. Staff has been monitoring an erosion issue of a Palk Road. Per control measures are being applied, but a long-term solution is scheduled for next year. There's currently no risk to the roadway. And then one other thing I have, going back up to wastewater that staff didn't get on the report, but I feel is worth mentioning, is both operators and one of our current operation members, Kate Ledley, Jeff Handman, and Bill Birdwell. They recently pulled down one of the NBRs on NBR two, pulled out a cassette, identified some breached cassettes, replaced them, did the repair, got it back operational all within one day. And it is back up and running at 100%. So or 99.999%, which is pretty incredible. If you ever see that process go down, it's, it's pretty entailed. There's a lot of moving parts, and the three of them plus myself getting that done within a day just speaks to their hard work and knowledge in the job. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. It will be on my report next month, though, in full. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Any questions for Matt this evening, counsel?
Matt, this is Dennis. A couple of questions. What do we know as a status on the marquee for middle school?
Marquees of middle school has gone through, I believe, an interview. And that would be more question for Ethan Spoo, the contract planner. Which I'm happy to get in touch with and give you an answer.
And I can throw in here a little bit. They did have to go through a process, a review process on that, but that was approved, I want to say, back in like July or August or something like that. So if they haven't got that marquee up, it could be one of those funds, supply chain issues where they're trying to get you know, electronics for the sign or whatever it is to complete that project.
Okay, thank you. And Matt, the second item was the actuator on Los Ana Road. Is that issue a failure problem? And if it is, is it under, is that actuator under, under warranty?
The actuator would be under warranty. It was a design issue. And unfortunately, we, at the time, we had a design company or a project management company overseeing that didn't catch that problem that we had hired or that was hired prior to 2017 Malice Engineering. So the actuator was put in. It wasn't installed with waterproof grommeting. So it allowed water infiltration once it was submerged, and then the vault was installed on that hillside without drainage. Again, this wasn't the, the fault of the city engineer or Public Works or anybody else. We hired a company to specifically oversee those items. They, they didn't fulfill that obligation. Unfortunately, this happened a few years after the project was completed. So that's where we're at.
Do we have any recourse through our legal department to perhaps get money back?
That's a great question. That's something we've tried under previous city, under the previous city attorney that kind of just, I guess, spun her wheels and went nowhere, but it's something we can revisit with Bronson. Absolutely.
I think we should. I mean, if it wasn't anything on our part, but it was the contractor that failed to perform. It seems like we should have the ability to go to, to them and try to get, recoup some of the costs.
Well, I want to be, Councilmember Hill, I want to be very clear about this. It was not the contractor. Or the, the contractor, as far as who built it, it was a matter, it was a flan design. It wasn't caught from a project management consultant. But it was not the contractor. I don't want to give, I don't want to give tapping the underground any undue press on that. They built it exactly as designed, and they did actually fantastic job for what they were given. So.
Okay, I used the wrong word there, but there is an organization that was responsible that didn't do their job properly.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt this evening, counsel? Okay. Matt, good report. And I, for one, grateful that you got your mic fixed. I could hear you loud and clear tonight. That was excellent. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, we do have a ordinance and public hearing. It'll be ordinance 2021-13, an ordinance establishing the adverbal taxes for necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the City of the Center for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, increasing property tax revenue from the previous year. And Maria Swerenske will be giving the staff report on that and presenting the ordinance to the council. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Mayor said, we are doing a public hearing tonight on the revenue sources as required by RCW 84.55.120 prior to passing the 2022 property tax levy. If we can scroll down a few pages and put up the general fund revenue, we will start with that. So as you can see, we have increased our property tax revenue to $597,000, which is a $50,000 increase from last year, and we have gotten that number confirmed by the assessors office. Next, the utility excise tax. As you know, we implemented the solid waste. You can stay on that screen for a minute. Yeah, we have implemented the solid waste and recycling tax last year, and we will be receiving a full year of that revenue this year. As Riley has mentioned previously, with the construction of the middle school complete, we have lowered our sales and use tax to $40,000 a month totaling just under half a million dollars for the year. We do think that that is a conservative and fair number for the city. And then our card room revenue estimated at $100,000 per month totaling $1.2 million for the year. We anticipate our license and permits to decrease next year, anticipating about 80 single family permits will be issued. And then our interdev revenues does include the second half of our ARPA funds or our American Rescue Plan Act. We do have a couple of years to spend those funds if we do not need those next year. And then the total general fund revenue is $3.868 million, plus the transfers in from the sewer utility of $400,000, making that adjusted revenue We can go to the next page. We will look at our property tax levy. So the assessed value is as of January 1st, 2021. And last year's value, last year's assessed value was $539 million. I'm sorry, $539,798,706. This year's assessed value is $626,952,574. The value of appreciation is just over $36 million, which is a 6.7% increase. And the new 2021 construction assessed value is $50,386,244, which is a 9.3% increase. The annexation increase was $412,640, which is a 0.1% increase. And then the state assessed utility infrastructure value is still be, to be determined this year, so we are using last year's numbers per guidance under the assessors office. So the current levy is $541,078. A 1% increase would be $5,411. The new construction levy increase is $50,543. And the increase for annexations is $414. So the new rate is $597,446 divided by the total assessed value. And you get a levy rate of 95 cents, which is under last year's levy rate that was just over a dollar. And our levy rate two years ago was a dollar six. And then we will go on to the revenue on the sewer and stormwater utilities. There is no increase in sewer rates for the seventh year in a row. That will remain at $66 a month. The new development and the rate will create enough revenue for the general fund debt repayment that we have planned for this next year. And then the stormwater maintenance fee does increase 2% or 20 cents per month to $10.60 under the three-year plan that was adopted in 2019. This is the final rate increase that has been approved by council. And you will see that increase on your bill mailed in February, since we do bill in arrears. And just so you know, we are still lower than the state average as far as stormwater fees. So that closes our public hearing, and I will send it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Maria. Good report. I'll turn it over to the council for any questions or comments. And if there are none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Also? Maria? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Maria, and in layperson's terms, how does this affect their property taxes?
Very little. It's basically, it would be 1/10 of 1%. So the 1% increase is an increase on the levy. So the one percent increase is an increase on the levy amount. It is only on the city share and it depends on the assessed value of your property, but it is very small.
So on, for instance, on a four hundred thousand dollar house, valued house, in rough numbers, how does that affect it?
Riley is on here for backup questions. Um, so the fifty-four eleven is spread out amongst the entire city.
Yeah, one second. I'm doing that math here right now. All right, four hundred thousand times one percent times one percent again. One, that would be about a forty dollar difference.
Per year.
Per year.
Now, is this an increase or a decrease?
That would be an increase.
Increase. It's a, it's a decrease of the amount of levy that, because it's ninety-five cents, but the assessed value has gone up, so it is an increase.
Okay, okay. So about, you know, forty dollars against the four hundred thousand dollar assessed value. Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think Justin, Councilmember Keeler, you had a question.
But you already answered it for me in your response to Randy.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions before I open up the public hearing, Council? Okay, so I'll go ahead at seven oh nine, open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on this evening's ordinance, if you could please give us your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes. I'll just give it another moment here. If anybody, remember to turn on your mic if you do want to make a comment. Okay, now I'm hearing anyone wanting to comment this evening. I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to the City Council for any further discussion or questions.
If we could scroll up to the bottom of the staff report, the recommendation for the staff would be that the City Council would approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. And the verbiage is there on the bottom.
I'm going to make a motion, approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. Proposed motion to approve, um, oh, excuse me, Mayor. I approve, like to move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen establishing the ad valorem taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the City of La Center, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year by one percent.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen establishing the ad valorem taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the City of La Center for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year by one percent. This is an ordinance. So Clerk, could I get a roll call for, please?
Councilmember Keeler?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. And thank you again, Maria. Well done.
Thank you, Riley and Maria, for answering those questions very well.
Okay, so that brings us to adjournment. If there are no further bus, if there is no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thanks, everyone.